Would you please stand for the invocation by Tucker Green?
Would you want me to let us pray? Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to meet out and celebrate all the wonderful accomplishments of our students and staff. We appreciate the opportunity to do the business of this school district. We ask you would give us wisdom and guidance that we would go the way you'd see fit and that we would continue to grow and improve our school district to serve the students here in Pickens County. We ask that you would give shield of protection over our students, staff, faculty, and everyone here in this community. And all these blessings we ask in your name.
Would you please remain standing as a sign of respect to our country? I'd like to offer a special thank you today to our veterans, past and present, for their service and their sacrifice to our country. Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by one of our special veterans, Mr. Aaron Holland. In addition to celebrating Veterans Day today, he's also celebrating his birthday. Thank you for your service, Mr. Holland.
Do you the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of our agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Garg Trail made the motion and Mr. Green seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The agenda has been approved. We will continue to recognitions. Recognition of Pickens County School District Accredited With Quality will be addressed by our Director of Community Engagement, Mrs. Dennis Nisho.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Young and guests present. The Georgia Accrediting Commission has provided and continues to provide leadership for education in Georgia. The mission of the Georgia Accrediting Commission, or GAC, is twofold. First, to establish standards promoting instruction of high quality for children in Georgia and to encourage schools to meet the established standards in organization, personnel, program of studies, finance, and physical plan for operations. The accrediting process prompts local schools and school districts to provide veteran safer physical facilities and to improve the qualifications of staff members, teaching conditions, and curriculum. It also provides a balance of judging the quality of schools. As a result, the academic credits of students who transfer between accredited schools can be accepted without special examination. Accreditation by the Georgia Accrediting Commission has always been a way of recognizing the schools with good educational programs. Its standards continue to serve as guides for those who want to develop good programs. The GAC determines the accreditation status of the educational program of each school and publishes an annual list of schools with accredited programs. GAC's executive director issues certificates annually for those schools and agencies. Provisionally accredited, accredited annually, accredited, accredited fully, and accredited with quality. When I call your name, please come forward to accept your school certificate. All schools in Pickens County were accredited with quality and that means the district is also accredited with quality. Mrs. Marla Callahan, Principal at Harmony Elementary? Mrs. Jennifer Halco, Hill City Elementary? Mrs. Stephanie Hall, Tate Elementary? Mr. Corey Thompson, Jasper Middle School? Dr. Chad Flatt, Pickens Junior High? Mr. Chris Wallace, Pickens High School? And Mr. Tommy Young for the Pickens County School District? Congratulations to each of our schools for being accredited with quality. Let's give them all a round of applause. The Georgia Department of Education has an achievement awards program in place to recognize the work and positive impact of K-12 Title I schools in closing the achievement gap. There are three categories of schools: Title I distinguished schools, Title I reward schools, and National ESEA distinguished schools. Title I distinguished schools are schools that rank in the top 5% school-wide program, also called SWP, and top 5% targeted assistance program. These schools also have the highest performance for the all-students group based on current statewide assessments. The primary focus of the school-wide program is to improve the academic achievement for all students, particularly the lowest achieving students. At this time, I would like to invite our Federal Programs Director, Dr. Janet Goodman, up to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm so excited to be here in Pickens County. I'm in month three and I was lucky enough to be able to go see Mr. Young and give him this exciting news that Hill City Elementary School for Pickens County was chosen as a Title I distinguished school. So at this time, we'd like to invite Ms. Halco to come on up and we're going to talk about all the great things she's been doing at her school. Let's give her a round of applause. And she did not do this alone and I think she would agree with that. She has a wonderful staff behind her, the families, the students. Everybody is involved in becoming a Title I distinguished school. She was asked by the Georgia Department of Education to serve on the consolidation funds panel to talk to other principals in other schools and talk to them about how we do our funding and budgeting here, which is a big reason for why she's doing so well. She has control over those funds that the federal government gives us. In concert with her faculty and staff and her community members, they decide what works best for Hill City. And I think that she would agree that that's one of the big reasons. There are some other examples of what they're doing with star reading. They provide supplemental supports in literacy. These are all from their school improvement plans, which she lives and breathes every day. I hear that all the time, even though I am not anyway responsible for FY-19, but I do have heard that for many, many years, Ms. Halco's been doing this and doing a great job. Also, they were able to buy leveled readers and I read subscription for kindergarten through second grade to make sure that every child is ready to move on to the next grade level with their reading ability. That was in a highlight with the school improvement webinar that we had last week. Hill City Elementary School, that was one of the slides that they focused on as well. So their school continues to get statewide and national recognition for the good work they're doing. She has also been asked, her and some school members, to present in a Teams meeting. That's how we do Zoom meetings nowadays, where she's going to present for the state and talk about all the innovations at Hill City and to tell them why she believes that what they're doing is the best work that they can do and recognized as one of the two in the entire state to get this recognition. So congratulations again to Ms. Halco. We also have a flag we'd like to give you. So here's your certificate. And then we'll get some way to hang that up in your school and let everyone know. Is it just back? Oh, we're backwards. Sorry. It's secret. There we go.
But wait. Hill City Elementary has also been named as a National ESEA Distinguished School for 2021 and is only one of two schools selected to represent the state of Georgia. How can schools be selected for the national level award? First, you have to be a Title I distinguished school, which we just announced that Hill City is, operating a school-wide program, and those schools are eligible to apply for the national distinction. Applications are submitted in one of three categories. I highlighted and read that Hill City submitted their application under closing the achievement gap between student groups for two or more consecutive years. Applications have all identifying information redacted to provide complete anonymity on scores and readers. Applications are reviewed and scored by a minimum of three readers. The average of the three scores is added to other qualifying criteria such as CCRPI scores for the most current years, growth from the previous year, CCRPI, and then points based on the poverty percentage of the school's population. And we'll look specifically at Hill City's in just a moment. The top two schools with the highest scores are named Georgia's representatives. Per the National Association of ESSA State Program Administrator Guidelines, the two selected schools must be from different categories. So the other school that's represented is in a different category. What sets these schools apart? You can see here that they demonstrate a wide array of strengths: team approaches, focused professional development opportunities, individualized programs for student success, and strong partnerships between the school parents and the community at large. Here's a look at the two schools that were selected to represent the state of Georgia. Hill City, you can see their 2018 CCRPI score, the 2019 score, and you can see the jump from 18 to 19. The poverty percentage, 52.6, and that is for the school. And then the initiatives that were implemented were the agricultural program, balanced literacy program, and then building the capacity of their teachers through professional learning. There were 75 eligible schools in the state out of 41 school districts, and they only received 39 applications. So Hill City was one of those 39. And then the other school was Smokey Rice Elementary from DeKalb County. The two schools selected to represent Georgia as National ESEA Distinguished Schools will receive a $20,000 grant from state Title I funds to participate in the NAESPA conference. And that conference is going to be held in New Orleans. So congratulations to... At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Halco, Mrs. Kretschmer, Dr. Goodman, and all of the Hill City staff to come up and receive their appropriate recognition. They will also be recognized at the federal conference in February. It will be a huge celebration for them onstage in New Orleans. So we're excited for them to be able to attend. So congratulations, Hill City.
All right. The next item is Pickens Junior High School Recognitions. Dr. Flatt and Mrs. Canyon Petty.
Hey, good evening. Just want to come through for a minute. I'm going to get out of the way and let Ms. Petty speak. She's the one does all the work. But I wanted to personally thank all of you all for the amount of importance and how much you realize the importance of having an athletic director at our grade levels is for the amount of things that we have going on. I know that's lost on people at times, but we offer the same amount of stuff at our school as they do at high schools. So it is very important that we have someone well more qualified than me to run these things, which is her. So I want to tell you all thank you for understanding that very much. I also want to thank Ms. Petty for the work that she's done. She's new to us this year. She's done a really good job of coming in, embracing the culture of what we try to do, and just immersing herself in what we do with these kids. And so she's done a really good job. So I'd like to give her a round of applause. I also want to thank all the parents who tote all these kids around back and forth places and get them places when all these coaches ask them to do things. None of this is possible without you all doing that. So thank y'all for everything that you all do. Thank you very much. And lastly, thank you to the coaches who spend inordinate amounts of time with our students and do all the different things that they do to help them, lead them, and try to teach them how we want them to be later in life. I can't express to you how important y'all's job is. So thank y'all for what you do. And with that, I want to get out of the way and let the boss talk now.
We have a list on tape now, so...
Make sure everybody's writing this down. All right. So as a first-year administrator and athletic director, honestly, I didn't know really what this job would entail. I know at the high school, I coached for several years, and I knew what our teams were like, but I really didn't know what these feeder teams would look like. And I didn't know what I could do to really support these coaches and these athletes. But really, I walked into the best group of coaches and kids that I could ever have imagined. These teams are truly doing phenomenal things. And I really feel like I don't have to do a lot because the coaches and the kids are doing such a great job. And I think that you parents can see that, and it's proof tonight for what we're celebrating. So I want to recognize first of all tonight, and what I'm here to recognize is the accomplishments of two of our fall sports teams. And I feel like that I'm going to be back here because right now, our winter sports teams are doing such a great job as well. But tonight, we're here to recognize the Mountain League Region Champions softball team and then our eighth grade, and we'll clap in just a minute, our eighth grade Mountain League Super Bowl Champion football team. Okay, so those are the two teams we're recognizing tonight. So I think it's important to really say that neither team has a Cinderella story because both of them have dominated for years. And it's funny, but it doesn't really take away the countless hours that they put in to get to this point. I watched them, you know, when I took over in July, practice almost every day, 90-degree heat, and put in these hours to get to the point that they're at now. And I think that that can't go unnoticed. And honestly, I'm proud of our kids. Dr. Flatt's proud of our kids, Dr. Nelson, the teachers. I know you parents are proud of our kids. The board's proud. We're all proud of what they've done. And that's why we're here tonight, is to celebrate them. So I know it's such a simple statement, but to see their work come to fruition in what we're celebrating tonight is such a blessing. And I'm so glad that I'm here to celebrate these victories with them tonight. So if we can really see them just one last time, be here as a team, like, I know that it's going to be worth it just for these few minutes. So I'm going to begin now with the recognitions of our softball team. So led by first-year coach, Coach Bailey Wimpy, who honestly, you would never guess was a first-year coach. To see her on the field, like, she was in her element. She was exactly where she needed to be. She was aided by Coach Tony Weaver, Coach Kayla Howard. The team's overall record was 13 and 2. For the past four years, the PJHS Net Softball Team has held the title of Mountain League Champs, which we hope continues next season. I hope it does. Season highlights include winning the region tournament against Lumpkin, which was the only team that they had lost to. And they only collected 14 fielding errors in 13 games. So that's very impressive on their part. So at this time, I'm going to invite Coach Wimpy to the front. She's going to say a few words, and then I'm going to introduce the team. We're going to take some pictures, and that way they'll be able to stand together one last time as a team. So Coach Wimpy.
I just want to thank the community and the board for the continuous support. I'm so proud of these girls. They've showed up every day in 97-degree weather, and they brought their A-game, and that's why we were able to bring this championship home. So I'm very thankful that my first-year coaching was with those girls, and I love them to death. Thank y'all so much.
All right. So coaches, if you want to come up here, I'm going to call the girls up here and that way we can get some pictures. That would be great. So Coach Weaver, is Kayla here tonight? Okay. And then Coach Wimpy, come up here. So ladies, when I call your name, come to the front, be recognized for your accomplishments. Please keep in mind that we have several players that are involved in winter sports. So if I call their name, they're not here, that's why. So ladies, if you're here, just go ahead and come on front. So we have J.C. Beck, River Becker, Ansley Jones, Laney Jones, Josie Hammerick, McKenna Moody, Carly Patterson. Carly Rao. Kaylee Hoffer. Keely Nelson, Jalen Cantrell, Lily Hammond Tree, and then Kylie Bozeman. All right, and we'll get a few pictures. All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations, ladies. All right. This year's eighth-grade football team is one for the record books. Not only were they this year's Mountain League Super Bowl champions, but they have won five consecutive Super Bowls with a five-year record of 39 wins and zero losses. Like, zero. None. This year's team was led by head coach Robert Faber. And I know that several of the coaches are, like, involved in other things tonight, but I want to go ahead and introduce the rest of the coaches. We have Scott Raymond, Joe Mullins, Danny Williams, Frankie Sparks, Colby Shaw, and Phil Savage. Those were our coaches tonight. I know that Coach Raymond is here tonight. He wants to speak on behalf of the team. So I'm going to go ahead and invite him up here so he can go ahead and say a few words. So Coach Raymond.
I spoke to Coach Faber today, and he's at basketball night with his son. And he just wanted to thank everybody up here, out here, for the support that we get from our administration. Like Dr. Flatt said, about the parents that come pick you up every day. It's been such a pleasure. I know I've only been here the last two years with him, but it's been a pleasure. And I look forward to see y'all grow up and do some neat things at the high school. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So Coach Wigg and Joe, if you guys will come up here and stand with your team. And I'm going to introduce the team, and you guys come on up. Is there anybody in the hallway that we can bring up? I think that's it. Okay. All right. So when I call your name, you guys come on up so we can take some pictures, okay? All right. Jackson Carver. Noah Clayhorn. Jonathan Collins. Coda Crowe. All right. Ezra Faber. I know he's not here. Hayden Jones, not here. Basketball. Kaden Kirkoff, basketball. Isaiah Lacy, basketball. Same thing. Dawson MacArthur. Luke McKenzie. Ethan McMillan. DJ Mitchell. Carson Mitten. RJ Mullins. Michael Muse. Landon Poole. McCord Purdy. Brayden Reese. Christian Starks. Bryce Stockline. Peyton Vincent. Brad Walker. Yeah, there we go. Jacob Watkins. Ben Wiggington. And Russell Young. Okay. Not sure if our managers are here, but I do want to recognize them. DeShay Buchanan, Azzy Craig, and Ellie Jarrett. So I do want to publicly recognize them. And then here's your team. Coaches, you want to join so we can take some pictures? All right.
All right. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to see young people involved in sports. Growing as a young person is not just about academics. It's the whole person. The next thing on our list is Pickens High School Recognitions, and we will hear from Principal Wallace.
Madam Chair, Principal Wallace is sick and was unable to be here with us. So Coach Williams will take care of that.
And he will be talking about the volleyball team and cross-country. We'll hear about their accomplishments.
Superintendent Young, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. And as always, it's a great day to be a Dragon. And we're going to share some things with you that's going on with Dragon Nation on 500 Dragon Drive. And we're very proud of these young men and women and coaches that we're going to present to you tonight. First, we have our volleyball team. And we're very proud of their accomplishments this year. They played, past several years, played in a very hard region, very difficult region, and have definitely, I believe, overcame a lot of odds, whether it be COVID, or injuries, or several things that they had to deal with, and then peaked at the right time, if you'll have it, and had a very good season. But to give you a little bit of background, it's been 17 years since we have had any major success, if you'll have it, in our volleyball program. In 2004, they were region champs, made first-round playoffs, and made... In 2004, they were region champs and made the first round of playoffs and made a quick exit. This year, to let you know a little bit about the region they were playing in, they finished fourth in the region and then we end up in the Elite Eight. So one good thing about traveling there, Mr. Wallace and I got to go to Hampton, Georgia and eat some good barbecue on the way down, that 93-mile trip. But ladies did well. They, like I said, placed fourth in the region. They beat Hampton in the first round, three to nothing, three games to none. Then went to La Grange on that Saturday and won three to one, if I'm not mistaken. And then we made a trip to Flowery Branch and ran into a buzzsaw. So these ladies played their hearts out. They represented Pickens High School and Pickens County school system very well. I would like to mention a few other accomplishments. Josie Copeland and Chelsea Lawson were named All-Area Honorable Mention. Lilly Went, Madison Powell were named All-Area Second Team. And our coaches here with us tonight, we have Karina Haney, Kelly Proudfoot. Claire Callahan also works with the program. She is not here. And Sidney Pearson, who's a former player, who has helped with the program, done a great job, works good with these young ladies. But the members of the team this year were Carolina Kearns, Chelsea Lawson, Emma Gleason, Madison Powell, Josie Copeland, Aspen Lux, Lux, Amber Bragg, Lauren Sewell, Ashlyn Sewell, Lilly Went, Cameron Simpson, Georgia Teal, Eva Stanley, and Brooklyn Henley. But we're very proud of what these young ladies were able to accomplish. And I know they had a tough season, very difficult opponents every time they came onto the court. But like I said, they peaked at the right time. That's what we like to see. And very proud of the job that Coach Haney and her assistant coaches have done. She's done a great job building this program. She's a product of our program. And that's what we like to see. Somebody to come back that's part of the program, invest in the program a lot of time, effort, and energy, and help it to grow. So if you will, everybody, please join me and congratulate them. God willing, please, we're doing pictures like normal.
Yeah.
And this is the mascot. Everything that's going on, I'll match.
Alright, thank you so much.
I've got two more.
Absolutely. We've got cross-country next.
Yes, my home, so I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, no.
I thought you'd move me on and push me out. Next, we have some members of our girls' cross-country team with us. Again, keep in mind, we roll right into state competition with cross-country and other sports. We roll right into winter sports. So we have basketball and wrestling going on at this time. And also, we still have swimming going on. So it's, some of these kids just roll right into one thing right after another. This is another situation where these young ladies, I know this whole team has worked very hard, kept close contact with Coach White and Coach Lutz concerning our cross-country program and was able to go and to watch them compete in the two events, what we call mega-events that we host here in Pickens County. I will say that our program has grown tremendously over the past several years. And by being able to have our course certified, then that makes a lot of folks want to come and run. Even the course that we use is used by other high schools all the way down into the metro area. They'll come up and use the parking lot facility to host their own tournaments. So we've got a very good course. People want to come. And you know, I think the last big one we had was about 1,400 people, 1,400 runners. So it was a park full of folks. These young ladies, again, work very hard. We're still, I believe, still fairly young and looking forward to some great things coming in the future. But again, placed fourth in the region at our region tournament here that we host and have hosted for several years. And then was able to go to the state tournament in Carrollton last Friday and run a, basically, I would say, completely different type of course and end up placing ninth in the state. Now, my math is not very good, but when I was sitting there trying to figure out how they were going to place, it took me a while. But it's a point system. And then, if I'm not mistaken, the lower the points you have, the higher you score. But last year, they were able to go. They finished eighth. And this year, we finished ninth, so we still got a top-10 finish. But you're seeing teams that are very spread apart for the most part as they run. A lot of our girls finish fairly close together. Same way with our boys. You'll see that when we talk about them. So that allows them to finish higher in region competition and in the state competition. But I can assure you without a doubt that people all around the state know Pickens County cross-country. And both our girls and our boys do a great job. We have a very, very great support system for both these teams. These parents get out, I've seen them work these events. They work with events not even going on to provide for these runners. And we're very proud of them. We've got some notable mentions, of course, to mention here. We've got sophomore Becca Wise. She placed second overall in the region, which might mistake that she was qualified for state. Either way, one and two qualified for the state, but the team was able to finish fourth and qualify. And then we have freshman Riley Deering is playing basketball. She finished 11th. And then we have another young lady who we're looking to come up next year as a freshman, Kayla Kearney, who won our JV race that we had there at the region tournament. But our varsity roster is comprised of, oh, and I will add, Becca Wise finished 13th in the state. John, if you don't mind me asking, what did we finish in state last year? So it went from 36 to 13 in one year of training in that state meeting. Again, like I said, it's no joke. She did very well. But our varsity roster, Mia Antonozzi, Riley Deering, Katie Goss, Zoe Howard, Meadow Palmer, Haley Peed, America Sanchez, Ruby Santos, and Becca Wise. Please join me and congratulate these young ladies. Also, excuse me, I'm being corrected. I have one other. It's Katie Goss. She's not on the list, so I'm sorry. I mentioned her, but she was here with me. Thank y'all so much. I see how John works now. Don't blame it on you, Wyatt. We've got the boys next. We'll get them. Come on, you guys. This is a hard bunch to keep control of. Boys are going up standing right there, please do. Alright, this is our boys' varsity cross-country team. And again, we were able to bring both teams before you last year, but now we've added another region championship to this. They've won their fourth straight region championship and seventh region championship in the last nine years. We had three PHS runners finishing the top eight. And that was Connor Hetchpeth, Will Hall, and Noah Jones. Again, this is a situation where nobody jumped out front and was outrunning everybody by a half a mile. These guys stayed relatively close to each other, was able to finish all with, you know, good spots, which of course allowed them to end up fourth in the state, made the podium, fourth out of 28 teams. We had three runners placed in the top 15. Connor Hetchpeth finished 10th, Will Hall 14th, Noah Jones 15th. And then the rest of our roster, again, Connor Hetchpeth, Alex Kwatney, excuse me, Alex, Francisco Santos, Will Hall, Noah Jones, Jonathan Koontz, Eli Eubanks, and Diego Rivera. Out of these, out of those names that I mentioned, we have three seniors. Connor Hetchpeth, Alex Kwatney, and Francisco Santos. So I'm looking for eight in 10 years. How about that? Looking to do that. But we have Donnie Wyatt with us tonight also. Again, as I mentioned, I may have forgot too, last time, Kenny Lutz is our coach of our girls' team. Jessica Edmondson and Coach Jonathan Facks helps work with this team. We also had a late coach that helped with us some as well that had some background across country. And one thing I was proud of, he works there at the high school some with us. And he said, "I just want you to know, this is one of the best groups of kids I've ever worked with." And he's been in the business for about 30 years. And he said, "Yes, sir, no, sir, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am," and they get the job done. That was his exact quote to me, and that's exactly the truth. All of these students that we brought before you tonight are some of the best that Pickens High School has to offer. We have many others, but this is some of the best. And I'm very thankful to be associated with them as their athletic director and work with these coaches and parents. I know you're very proud as well because they honor you with what they do. And we're very proud of this group of young men. So if you will, please congratulate them with it. Also, just like I mentioned, I know that superintendent of the board, you've been made aware of the changes that have come along from GHSA in the past 24-48 hours. Campus Pickens High School, we're excited. We're getting back with some of the mountain schools that some of our kids compete against, K through 8. We know we've got two or three stragglers along coming on there. We're going to make some trips. But I can say I've been part of situations where they have been beat. So you know, we're going to put forth our best effort. But I think it'll be good for us to make this move. I think our program is moving in that direction with what we see in all of our sports coming up the next two or three years and then what you saw at the middle school today being recognized. I think we've got a stretch run here we can make for several years. We're really excited. And again, as always, I thank you for the opportunity that you've given me to work with these kids. Because during the day, the 8-3 can get on your nerves sometimes. But then when you get to go and watch what these kids do and watch them perform, then that, you know, that's my payday right there. I really enjoy that. But I do appreciate you letting us be here and letting us acknowledge these students. Yes, sir.
We know what you're talking about, but for public knowledge, would you explain what your reference is?
With reclassification that took place and the multiplier that GHSA put in place to judge where students should go to school, sorry about that. Thank you. We are moving, we're able to move from 4A or Quad A down to AAA. We were the smallest school in the state of Georgia in Quad A or 4A. And then we were told if any schools wished to move up, then we would be given the opportunity to move down if we choose to do so. So we were contacted earlier in the week. We had prepared an appeal anyway to move down. And then we were sent an email that says, "Hey, so-and-so has decided they wanted to play up. Would you still like to move down?" And I couldn't type it fast enough. So we, for now, will be 3A, of course, for the next two years. And then our region assignments came out today. And then we will have to get together as a region in some neutral site or a site somewhere in the middle and meet, and that's when we form the hierarchy of our region. And then we'll have to come up with our own region rules and all that. But most of these teams, we are very familiar with. Like I said, some of these kids in basketball and rec league football, we'll see some of these teams, K through 8. So this is what, even though it's 7 AAA, it's what mostly what 7AA was back in the mid-'90s with all of us mountain schools together. And of course, we have Franklin Hart and, which was traded, Franklin Hart and Stevens. So we'll be making some trips across the mountain. We'll be making some trips here as well. But we look forward to this opportunity. Some of these more local schools, they'll bring more people with them to our events and then we will be able to travel better to their events as well. So I think it will be, you know, a win-win for both teams when we do compete and be able to bring in a little more revenue and be able to provide more for our student athletes. Any further questions?
Thank you for everything you do for our students, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, superintendent reports. Alright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start this evening with a financial update from Ms. Smith, our CFO. Come on down, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Somebody very tall. It's not me, even with heels. Martha has our report up, our general fund revenue. We collected 17.84% of our budgeted revenue and have expended 24.63% of our budgeted expenditures in our general fund. If you'll scroll down a little bit. Our consolidation of funds is, of course, that blend of general fund and federal grant money that relieves some of the restrictions and red tape. I think our principals appreciate this fund where they have a lot more flexibility and a lot less paperwork to do, as they nod back there in the corner. Of course, we have no debt at this time. Our capital outlay, which is our SPOSS account and our construction, our SPOSS revenue for the month of October was $631,770.03. We earned $3,091.63 in interest. Our expenditures for the month totaled $679,728.41. And our month-end SPOSS balance was $9,409,220.13. We still have a multitude of contracts open at this time. One of our large ag contracts, we have not paid any payments on just yet, but one is in full swing. Our special revenue account, and I'll remind you that this is federal grant money, our school nutrition program, and our outside GLRS grant. We've collected 10.51% of our budgeted revenue and expended 25.44% of our budgeted expenditures. Please do not be concerned that that expenditure number is larger than the revenue number at this time. We did a very large request for funds. We must spend these funds first because mostly they're grant funds in order to get those monies back. We put in over a half million dollar request today and should receive that within 14 days. Do y'all have any questions on the fund report? Mr. Young asked me to go ahead. We have a budget amendment a little further down the agenda. Let me go ahead and give you a little information while I'm up here. Martha, just a moment. If you pull up that first one, it says amended budget. In our amendment, what we're requesting is to either, when we did our initial budget, which is the last budget that you approved, most of the grant monies, we did not have the final allotments for this year. So we have to do an estimate based on what we know we're expecting to happen this year based on what the information we received from the state of Georgia. Now, we have actually received a lot of those allotments, not all of them. I probably still have at least a dozen grants that aren't finalized. A lot of them are in vocational area. They're a little backed up right now. Our art grant, we submitted an amendment, October 18. Our art grant, we submitted an amendment October 18th, have still not received approval for it. Those are CARES grants. There are so many systems, and we have so many grants. They have hired new employees. They are still in training. That system has bogged down and is moving quite slowly. So if you'll bear with me, what the changes here are involved italics. These are items from our initial budget. We actually have the real grant numbers. One of the other tabs is the detailed summary of each of those grants and how it was approved by the state of Georgia. So we don't bring it to you until we have full approval with them, so that sometimes they will send it back and ask for revision. This way, you get to approve and get to see what they have actually approved for us. But it is only federal grant money that changed, no other category, not general fund, not consolidation, and not SPOSS money. So it is just that one column. Do y'all have any questions on that? I also emailed it out to you, just so you had it a little bit ahead of time. But if you have any questions about all the detail or want to know about an item, feel free to email me or call me or Mr. Young, and we'll get the answers for you as quickly as possible. Do y'all have any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Gillen, Madam Chair, is unable to be with us tonight, so we're going to do operations a little bit differently. We're going to have our Director of Nutrition, Ms. Beth Thompson. She's going to talk to you about food service, Beth. If you would, come on up. And then I'll talk to you guys about construction.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm a little taller in between. Tonight, I wanted to share and really update and inform our community and our students, our parents, on the current situation that our food service operation is trying to manage and trying to work through at this time. So, just like most small businesses, households, and people in this room, food services is not immune to the global supply chain shortage. I can't think of a consumer goods category that hasn't been impacted, and economists say the supply issues could linger well into 2022. The good news is that Food Services has been able to work with our vendors to find comparable products when there's been outs and substitutes. And so far, we've been able to follow our menus with limited substitutions. At times, we've had to get creative and procure from several vendors just to find the volume that we need of many items, but we've managed. However, tonight, I just want to inform everyone that, you know, all of our stakeholders, that the international supply chain that we're all experiencing could cause us at some point not to be able always to follow our menu and not always to have everything that we'd like to have and with very little notice. So, simply, we may not always be able to follow the published menus plan, as I said. We might have to cut back on the number of choices or variety of items offered. We may even run out of a particular item on a given day at your school, but we will always, always have something to feed the children. It may just not be their first choice. I would also like to ask that you remain patient with our cafeteria staff in your school. We've been understaffed in most of our kitchens since last spring, and it's not looking any better right now. And our staff has really been doing more work this year than they have in past years with less staff. I say that because we are actually serving more students per day today than we have in the last five years. It's been not since 2016, '17 that we've seen the number of kids that we're feeding in the current rate that we're doing. And breakfast especially. In 2016, '17, we might have served 900 breakfasts a day. We're up to about 1,800 breakfasts a day. So we've doubled that. So it's just, it's a lot of work. But I hope you all know, from all the times that I've been given the opportunity to be here, that our food service team is dedicated. They're resilient, they work hard, and they take tremendous pride in serving our students. We, as a group, as a team, are committed to providing nutritionally balanced breakfast and lunch meals that our students need for growth and academic success. It is an honor to participate in the educational process to help make a difference for our greatest resource, our students, our future generation. And we take it very seriously. So I want to thank you for your support. And please don't ever hesitate to call me or any member of my staff, any of our managers, if we can be of assistance, okay? But I just wanted to share that with you, just let you know that we are working very hard behind the scenes, and we will always have something to feed the children. It just may not be what was on that menu that we planned for that day, okay?
Ms. Thompson, what I'm hearing you saying to all the stakeholders is, "Please be kind and please be patient."
Sure, sure. And I'm trying not to lie, and I'm trying not to make excuses, but I just feel like everybody just needs to understand where we're coming from.
We all need reminders, "Please be kind and please be patient."
Right, okay.
Thank you for all you do.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Beth, for everything you do for us. I'm going to give Stacy's construction update to the board. Stacy wanted me to let everyone know that construction of the new ag facility at the junior high is going well. I think Martha's got some pictures that we're going to pull up there so everybody can see. There you can see the facility is well on its way. Here's a nice shot of the exterior. And on the interior now, you can see the water drops and everything are being put in right now. They're getting the plumbing. You can see all the drops that are being installed. They are moving at a good pace now. It's amazing what they can get done, how quickly they can get it done. We suspect that we will be ready to occupy that building sometime in December. So by the time we come back from Christmas break, the second semester, it should be ready to go. So we're very excited. I want to thank the board again for its support, everything it does to make projects such as this one a reality. This is a very exciting time in Pickens County with all of the construction that we've got going on and the construction that we've got in the future. So thank you again. And that will conclude superintendent reports. Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Young. We come to action items in our agenda. And the first item up is the approval of naming the Pickens High School Basketball Court, Coach Coward Court. Mr. Young, do you have some comments on this item?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you. As the board is aware, over the upcoming break, we will be completely stripping the court at PHS and refinishing in a color scheme recommended by the coaching staffs. As a part of this refinish, I believe it's a perfect opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of an individual that has done so much for high school basketball in Pickens County. My recommendation to the board tonight is to name the court at Pickens High School, Coach Coward Court, and to include this new stenciling in the refinish of the floor. Upon completion, I would like for the board, Coach Coward, and anyone else that would be interested to join us down on the actual basketball court for a ceremony. And that will be, date of that will be forthcoming, and we will announce it in social media and in all of the papers and everything. Without taking too much time, let me briefly list the accomplishments of Coach Coward in basketball. 32 years as the head coach of the Dragonettes basketball team spanning from 1969 to 2001. A record of 692 wins and 211 losses. 15 state playoff births. Nine region championships. One state championship in 1974. Nine-time Region Coach of the Year. I did not list in those accomplishments. He taught me advanced algebra and trig. He tried really hard, but that was an absolutely impossible task, and I think he would attest to that. But that is an impressive list of accomplishments. And so I am proud tonight, and Coach Coward is with us as well. I am proud tonight to ask the board for approval for the naming of the Basketball Court at PHS.
Very good. All right, guys, you can't all four make the motion. Let me just start with that.
I'll make the motion, we're approving it.
He jumped again. All right, Mr. Green has made the motion that we name the Basketball Court at Pickens High School, Coach Coward Court.
I will second that. He's the only member of this board who actually was in the school when Coach Coward was coaching and teaching and in conversations with him over the years. I think he primarily most proud of the fact he was a teacher and a damn good one at that.
Well, he got you to graduate, so that's, I'd say he's a good teacher, yeah.
I think he was as amazed as I would.
Well, that's great. All right, Mr. Green made the motion. Mr. Gartrell seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say I'm glad we could do this. I think it's well deserved and overdue. If I can, I want to share one little thing. I was able, when we were researching, I got my hands on his paperwork that was submitted when he was elected to the Georgia Athletic Coaches Association Hall of Fame. But there's one part on his timeline, if I read the whole thing, we'd be here all night. But the one part of the timeline that I thought kind of demonstrated how dedicated he was to Pickens Athletics was at the start, 1965. It says, "He contracted with the Pickens Caddyboard of Education to teach math at Pickens High School." And in quotes, it says, "Help coach football boys and girls' basketball and be head baseball coach, in parentheses, on a voluntary basis, no pay." But it says, "On August 9th, 1965, his son, Michael, was born on a Monday, the first day of football practice." So at 2:00 PM, Coach Coward went to his first practice at PHS and did not miss a practice nor a game in the 36 years of his tenure.
Coach Coward, I will say that I did not have the honor of being in your classes. I moved up here about the time you retired. I taught here for 15 years, and many teachers that I taught with were in your classes, and I heard a lot of wonderful stories. And while I didn't have the honor of being in your classes, I am honored to be part of the board that is doing this. And just because I was not your student does not mean that it's any less of an honor for me to name this court in your honor. I think it's very well deserved. Thank you, sir, for all you've done. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? 5-0, the motion is approved.
Coach Coward, would you come up so that we can get a picture? That would be great.
I'm going to put you on the spot if you can say anything, too. If you will say absolutely.
One thing I learned about speeches, you make them very short. And it's been 20 years and six months since I made a speech in front of a group at a banquet, so I'll say much more. I do appreciate this. And like I said, it's been 20 years since I retired. And I just like to tell y'all one thing. So some of y'all, I don't know how y'all got so low so quick. Since I were in my classes. One thing I'm missing in here is a chalkboard. I'd like to send a couple of you back there. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as presented?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gartrell has made that motion. Seconded by Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. The PAR is approved as presented. Next item is approval of the Financial Reports. Do I have a motion to approve the Financial Reports Ms. Smith has presented?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Green has made that motion, and Mr. Holland has seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is the approval of the FY '22 Budget Amendment. Mr. Young, do you have, do you or Ms. Smith have some information on this amendment?
No more than what Ms. Smith presented. Madam Chair, does anyone have any questions of her?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '22 Budget Amendment as presented?
Second, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gartrell makes that motion. Seconded by Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is unanimous, the motion passes. We have a request for Revision of Policy, GARH, which is the Employee Leaves and Absences. Mr. Young, would you explain the requested changes to this policy, please?
I would, Madam Chair. As the board recalls, we changed the cost of the buyback for PSR employees from $25 to $55 per day for sick days accumulated over 45 days as an added benefit for these employees last month. This requires a change in the language of our policy. Based on GSBA's recommendation and the vetting of our board attorney, we would like to remove the dollar amount from our policy and place the actual dollar amount in the employee handbook moving forward. This will void a change in policy again if a future board decides to make any further changes in this amount. And so I would request this evening that the board tentatively approve this revision to Policy, GARH, so that it can lay for the 30-day review period.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Revision of Policy, GAR, as presented and to lay on the table for 30 days as Mr. Young explained?
I have the motion.
Okay. Mr. Holland made that motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. Our next item is the approval of the 2022-2023 Pickens County School District Calendar. Mr. Young, do you have any comments on the proposed calendar for the 2022-23 school year?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The series is going, you're trying to pull it up. It disappeared on us. Technology is good when it works, and then when it doesn't, it's not. But I'm pleased to bring to the board this evening our 22-23 school calendar for approval. Many members of our community have been anxiously awaiting this day so that they can make plans for things such as vacations and such as that in the coming year. This year's calendar will be a balanced calendar with 90 days in each semester while maintaining the breaks everyone is accustomed to. This calendar was created with the help of my leadership staff at the central office as well as our principals and their leadership staffs in their respective buildings. And I am happy to report that of the three calendar options we considered, this calendar won unanimously. And so it has strong support evidently. And so there it is. I'm asking for board approval. It's a 90-day balance per semester. The fall break and the spring break coincide with Cherokee County, which is important to people as they make their plans as well. And so this is the calendar that I'm bringing to the board for recognition or recommendation this evening.
All right, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Pickens County School System Calendar as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Green makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Is there any further discussion?
This is very close to the line with what we have currently, right? This current year?
Yeah, in terms of the start date and the end date at the end of the school year, it's within a day.
Yeah, the Friday night graduation, right before Memorial Day. Is that what we're doing again?
Yeah, Friday night graduation is there, finishing up the school year, yeah, the day before, so we don't have to do that. day before, so we don't have to do that half day like we did last year. So the campus will be clear and we can get things set up for graduation.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Calendar is approved, 5-0. The next item is the approval of the natural gas contract for one year. Mr. Young, do you have some information on this item?
I do, Madam Chair. Bids for natural gas have come in and I am ready to request approval for the contract commencing December 1st, 2021, that will run through November 30th of 2022. And these have been reviewed by Mr. Gillen and the low bidder is our provider for this year as well. EMC Natural Gas doing business as True Natural Gas with a bid of .437 a therm. We expected an increase and we actually got lucky. They told us with the window and so we did not see the increase that they tell us is coming in the next couple of weeks. So my recommendation is to go with True Natural Gas at .437 a therm.
Well, that sounds like good news. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the pricing for True Natural Gas at .437 cents per therm for the school system gas supply for the coming year?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith makes that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Holland seconds that motion. All in favor? The motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is the approval of memorandums of agreement with Western Governors University and the University of West Georgia. Mr. Young, are these MOAs for student teachers from these colleges to work within the Pickens County school system?
They are, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the MOAs with both Western Governors University and the University of West Georgia?
Subway.
Second from Mr. Green. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, the next item on our agenda is approval of out-of-state field trip Jasper Middle School 6th Grade. Mr. Young, do you or Mr. Thompson have information on this requested out-of-state field trip?
We do, Madam Chair. Mr. Thompson is here and is is going to talk to you about the field trip, something that we're bringing back now that COVID hopefully has abated to a degree. So, Mr. Thompson, if you if you would, please come up and tell them about this exciting
Thank you all very much for listening to me about this. I'm excited to present it to you. We actually, I recommended this trip in the spring of 2020. So it was approved that fall. We had started taking payments for our students for them to do an extended day field trip. Because it's out of state, we had charter buses lined up and students will attend Tennessee Aquarium, Rock City, the IMAX Theater, and have lunch on the Chattanooga Riverboat Cruise. So we had that approved in 2020, had to cancel due to COVID, but I'm very excited to hopefully present this to you tonight and hopefully get to do this in the spring. Any questions? Again, this is a field trip that will be, we would utilize charter buses to get there. The students will leave before the actual school day, arrive after the school day ends back to campus. The cost for students, which will include the lunch, all those menus, and a t-shirt, would be $100. I'm asking for approval before we hit December so that we can provide some payment options and payment plans for our students. Hopefully do some fundraising efforts through maybe device stays and things like that to help students who might need scholarship and to help fund the trip.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask is I'm sure you have it all worked out. I was just kind of curious as to what we were going to do to help those who did need some scholarships.
Yes. In the past, when we were going to do this in 2020, we actually had some local stakeholders and businesses who would provide some scholarships as well. And I think last time of all of our students, we were close to 100% participation. And of course, that's our goal. With this one being a little more expensive, we do want to do some fundraising efforts though for our students who maybe are less fortunate so we can get some.
That's great.
Participation with all students that want to attend.
When I taught in the building that has 6th graders, I didn't teach 6th grade at the time, but the 6th graders came back and they were so enthused and they, because of the activities that you have planned, they learn so much. And I do hope that we can get some folks that would be willing to help help fund those kids because it's just fantastic.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the Jasper Middle School 6th Grade Field Trip to Chattanooga in May of 2022?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Holland has made that motion.
Seconded.
Mr. Gartrell has seconded. All in favor? The motion passes 5-0. I'm not a superstitious person, but I certainly hope that this doesn't bring another wave of COVID. May you go to Chattanooga and have a wonderful time.
Thank you all so much.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th, 2021 call meeting at 5:00 PM and the October 14th, 2021 regular meeting at 6:00 PM?
Make that motion that we approve.
Okay, Mr. Green has made that motion. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Smith has made the second on that. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Public participation is the next item on the agenda. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item is board comments. Do we have anybody that would like to say anything?
I'd just like to add, and I've said it before, when we get to see the students and the coaches and the teachers that we don't normally get to see, it's always a special meeting. I wish we had opportunity to interact more with the students and hear more about their accomplishments in their own words, but we don't have the time.
Right.
But I enjoyed seeing them and congratulations to all of them.
Absolutely. Well, it's nice that we, what we're doing is important, but it's kind of nice to see the results too. Anyone else have anything to say?
Well, I do. All right, this is our November board meeting. And I just want to say to all of you here that are present physically, those of you who are watching virtually, and to all of the state coalition and the county, I'm very thankful for the opportunity to serve the community. As I mentioned, I did teach school here for 15 years and when I retired, I prayed about where I could serve the community in another way besides teaching. And this opportunity came came about. Some of you are happy about that, some of you are not. I understand that. But I'm very thankful to have the opportunity to serve on the school board. I'm very thankful to have all of you. I work with four wonderful men. We don't always agree. That's okay. I've learned a lot and I hope they have, but we get along very well. Just because we don't always agree doesn't mean we don't like each other or whatever. I'm very thankful for these four men. I'm proud to work with them. I'm glad they're there. I do call them and ask for advice sometimes and I just can't tell you how thankful I am for them. Thankful for Mr. Young, Mr. Landrum, but I am most thankful for Ms. Seagres. Trust me, we all depend on her. She keeps us all afloat. But anyway, I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Gratitude is, can keep all of our hearts light. And I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving and we'll see you in December.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith jumped in on that one. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Gartrell. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously and we are adjourned at 7:20 PM. Thank you very much. Have a safe evening.